Good evening, everyone. There is a sign-in sheet up here at the podium for anyone who would like to speak this evening. There's also a sign-in sheet. Once we start, there'll be a sign-in sheet at the end of that table. If you want to come and sign in and then speak, you'll have to sign in through the screen. Thank you. I was going to introduce everyone on the line. How would you like to be introduced?
Um, yes, uh, I will give you my name.
Sure, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Michelle Canaro.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody for this special hearing on the Medline DEIS document. There is a sign-in sheet on the end of that table for persons who would like to speak tonight. You must sign in to speak. Um, if you just bear with me for a few minutes, I'll introduce everybody first. We have Board Member Bill Kelly, Board Member Rose Pennings, our Planner Leslie Dodson, our Engineer Andrew Federson, Stenographer Michelle Alcanaro. My name is Fred Reichel. I'm Chairman of the Planning Board. Rich Hoyt is our Attorney, Sue Haddon is Secretary, Board Member Rich Montemorano, Vice Chair Jay Boma, and Board Member Ryan McGuire. We have a couple of things I wanted to read. The hearing notice first, which is the reason for this meeting. And if you just bear with me, it shouldn't take very long. There's a Town Montgomery Planning Board Notice of Completion of Draft Environmental Impact Statement for DEIS for Medline Industries Inc., Distribution Center Pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act of SEACUR. Notice of Combined Public Hearing on DEIS and Site Plan and Special Exception Use Permit Applications for Medline Industries Distribution Center. This is a notice of the special board meeting. Please take notice that pursuant to Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and the provisions of 6 NYCRR 617, the Town Montgomery Planning Board, acting as a SEACUR lead agency, determined on July 8th that the DEIS for the Medline Industries Distribution Center as described below was complete and ready for public review and comment. Please take further notice that pursuant to SEACUR, the New York State Town Law and the Town Montgomery zoning law, the Planning Board will hold a special meeting to conduct a combined public hearing on August 13th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Valley Central Middle School Cafeteria, Route 17K, Montgomery, New York, to receive public comment on the DEIS and site plan and special exception use permit applications for the Medline Industries Distribution Center as described below. At the public hearing, all persons will have an opportunity to be heard. Persons may appear at the hearing in person or by agent. Written comments will also be received by the Planning Board prior to or at the hearing. After the closure... After the closure of the hearing, the Planning Board will also accept written comments on the DEIS for a period of 20 calendar days. All written comments must be addressed to the contact person noted below, which is Sue Haddon at Town Hall, who's the Planning Board Secretary. I'll let the description... I'll leave the description of the project up to the project sponsors. After that description, I'll go over a few rules for how we proceed this evening, and then we can get started. So I'll hand it over to you, Dimitri.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Do you want to address the board or adjutant this way?
Um, probably address the board for this.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. On behalf of Medline Industries, thank you very much. We're grateful to be here and present our project to you. Over the last 10 to 11 months, we've been working very hard to go through the process to answer all the questions and diligently answer all the questions. We appreciate all your time and professionalism. Medline Industries is a fourth-generation privately-held, no-deaf, manufacturer, distributor of medical product and services. We're the largest provider of full-spectrum healthcare services for the full continuum of healthcare, to the hospitals, to the clinics, to the nursing homes, to all the other medical facilities in the United States, including home and security, including military bases, A to Z. We have over 20,000 team members that provide day-to-day services to hospitals all over the country. This project is by far the biggest investment we've ever made in a community. It's a $1.3 million worth of distribution center, $120 million total investment, with over 300 jobs being transferred from Wauwahanda into Montgomery with a total commitment of 700 jobs. We are looking forward to complete the DEIS process, answer all the questions, and proceed according to the process. We love this community here. Currently today, there's over 50 employees that live in this community with their families. Once we move in and hire full 700 jobs, we estimate over 250 jobs will be filled from the town, village, of Montgomery and the community in Mayewaun. As we've said many times before, Medline is the company that goes above and beyond for its customers, you know, its employees, and its community. We will make you proud, and we will always do the right thing. Some of the events that I wanted to mention is have been noted in the media and other events just to make sure we make it very crystal clear for everybody is, A, none of our trucks will go through the village. This is number one question we've heard from the community, is no Medline trucks are going to go through the village of Montgomery. That's number one. Number two, there is... There's been a lot of rumors, and we call them lies unfortunately and fabrication, but there was a nuclear waste in our facility. We've conducted multiple reviews, multiple tours. This is pure fabrication. There is no radioactive material stored at Medline Distribution Center. And number three is, this facility is strictly distribution center. There is no sterilization of any kind taking place at our distribution center. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to a successful meeting and looking forward to hearing all the comments from public and always doing the right thing. Thank you so much.
Okay, first, I'd like to read a few rules so that we can progress through this meeting. I have some rules to read to the audience, okay? Number one, sign in. All persons wishing to speak shall sign in upon... Come up front and sign in. Please bring your name as I plan to recognize speakers in the order that they have signed in. Public comment shall be limited to no more than five minutes per person. Each person shall be permitted one appearance at the podium. Once all who want to speak have spoken, if time permits, any person who has already spoken may take an additional appearance at the podium to address the board a second time. The speaker shall provide his or her name and a locality where they reside. Providing a full address is at the speaker's option. Timekeeping, I'm going to keep the time. We have an hour pass up here. Comments, all comments shall be related to the purpose of the public hearing. Persons wishing to speak must address the board and face the board. We have a stenographer up here, and please, one person at a time. It's much easier to take good, accurate records. All persons must be recognized by the chairperson prior to speaking. Control, a chairperson shall control the public hearing. Under no circumstances will personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks be permitted. The use of profane, vulgar, derogatory, inflammatory, threatening, abusive, racial, and/or ethnic or disparaging language is not permitted. Individuals committing such acts may be removed from the public hearing by the police. Any person or persons refusing to comply with a formal request to voluntarily remove themselves from the meeting may be charged with disorderly conduct. I don't think we'll have that problem, I'm hoping. Written submissions may be submitted to the Planning Board clerk provided they are signed and dated. As far as signed posters and placards, they are permitted in the hearing room. They may not block any travel aisle in the room or any other attendee from viewing the proceedings. Signs shall not contain obscene language, nor shall they prevent the board or the security personnel from viewing the audience. This public meeting will be audio and video recorded and also be transcribed by a stenographer. Just on a note of safety, there's an exit here, this side of me to my left. There's one through the hall that way, and if you go out either way, right or left, there'll be an exit out there in case of emergency. All right, thank you all for your patience and for attending here this evening. I'd like to start. We'll start with our first sign-in, Don Berger.
Evening, Board. What I first want to do here today is to greet the employees of Medline and the labor unions that are here. As a community, I don't object to Medline, Medline employees, all the people that are seeking employment. This is not an employment issue as far as we're concerned. We are looking at this board as a method of how this Town Board, Planning Board, and IDA Board have put this whole project together. We object to that. We do not object to these employees. They have the right to earn a wage. They can do whatever they want. They're welcome here. We have numerous times come before your board and gone before the Town Board, and we've pressed a moratorium. And the mere presence of a moratorium is all it is, is us wanting to push back and say relax, guys. We have a major project here, and it appears that it's just being rushed. There's been a total lack of regard for the residents of this town by this board and the Town Board to allow us to have even a discussion of a moratorium. I requested on the Town Board side for it to be placed on their agenda. That would never happen. We've talked about it before, this Planning Board, and you shuffled me to the Town Board. The problem is, we get shuffled between boards, 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 and nothing seems to happen. What I also like to talk about is I've met Dimitri a couple times. He's a real nice guy, I have no problems with him. The one thing that we did talk about at the village meeting was the idea of good neighbors. And I appreciate that because everybody wants to be a good neighbor. My problem tonight is, and I'm going to read a part of an email that was sent from Maureen Hallahan to businesses up and down the corridor of Newiantown. "We need your voices present. There is a small group of anti-development people that are trying to intimidate and persuade the Town Montgomery Planning Board and Town Board from advancing and supporting the Medline project. The information they are circulating is irresponsible, inaccurate, and they will be coming out in force." I know Maureen doesn't live in Orange County, but how is that being neighborly? I don't see it. She's the chair of the Orange County Partnership, which I believe, and many people believe, is the problem. The Orange County Partnership is the problem. I believe they're putting on such pressure to this board, such pressure to the Town Board, that you're just listening to that group and perhaps other outside concerns, maybe some law firms. I don't think that's a good neighbor. Also, the other issue we have is the idea that Medline, let's face it, you're running out on a pilot program over at Waywayound, and you're coming over to the Town Montgomery requesting a 10- or 15-year pilot program. You know, I always think of good neighbor as a neighbor who pays their taxes. That's what my father told me when I was a little boy. I think everybody knows that. The other part to that is that really bothers me is, in reading from the Times Tower Record, the Madison Valley School District have decimated. Last year, during a budget process, they had to lay off 19 employees. That's not a good neighbor. That's killing the school district. I don't want that to happen here at Valley Central. I want Valley Central taxes to be paid, unlike, I guess, Medline. So what we've done is, we've reached out to many people in this community, and I know you're going to say, well, this is not for us, but I'm going to give it to anybody. We've gone out and we've collected signatures for a petition for a moratorium to be instituted in this township. We're not putting a timeframe on it, we're just saying, taking a break, and let's think about what we're doing. You guys have such major projects going on. If you were at the Planning Board meeting last night, that was disgraceful what happened at that Planning Board meeting, because what's happening is you're riling up the folks that live here, and it was disgraceful what happened at that meeting. That should not happen. We should be working on this together. We don't have a comprehensive plan. I think it was, the last comprehensive plan was in the Roman days, is that one of them yet? No, sorry, 31 years ago. Come on. One minute. Can I take a smoke? So what I'm going to give to you is a copy of the signatures that we've collected so far. These signatures have only been collected for the past week. It's sizable, and we just think that, or what I want to see, is for this Planning Board to communicate with the Town Board, to reflect what the needs of the residents are. Freddie, last week you said, "We have to, we have to work together. We have to listen to the residents." I want you to listen to the residents.
Maria Valtramedy.
Good evening, thank you. I'm here just to echo the need for a moratorium. I think it would be extremely foolhardy to go ahead and execute such large projects. It's not only Medline, it's also... Not only Medline, but also Selfish, to execute such large projects without having a master plan ahead of the game. Surely the plan comes before the execution. It's only the responsible thing to do as public servants. Our elected officials should want to do the logical thing. It's just sensible. I have nothing against Medline. I'm sure they're a reputable company. They wouldn't be as successful as they are if they weren't. But I think it's crazy and foolhardy and aberration of public trust frankly to go ahead and proceed projects without having a plan in place to look at the big picture. Thank you. Moratorium. Strong word, easy to use.
All right, we do have some elected officials with us tonight. Jim Scoofus would like to speak, state legislator. Are there any other elected officials in the audience that would wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman and Planning Board, thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is James Scoofus, and I'm the state senator for the 39th district, which includes the town of Montgomery. Most of Medline's approvals are locally driven, as you all and I are aware. It's up to the applicants, just as with any other project, to satisfy the concerns that will no doubt be raised by many other speakers this evening. Traffic, environmental impacts, et cetera. Just as with any other project, if the applicant is unable to overcome those challenges, the project should be rejected. I would like to focus... I would like to focus on another aspect of this project, however, one that I have a general, deep interest in as a state legislator, particularly when it impacts taxpayers that I represent, and that is the incentive package that's being proposed by Medline. Pilots serve a purpose that is crystal clear. When used properly, they're supposed to incentivize a project that needs incentivization to come to a community and be financially competitive. Furthermore, they're supposed to serve as a runway to full taxation. The proposed Medline pilot, however, flies in the face of any and all decency. It is no coincidence that just as Medline's 10-year pilot in Waywayound is expiring, literally they're in the 10th year, they decide to pick up, move, and go bigger, begin the process for a completely new pilot. If I'm a Waywayound taxpayer, and I used to represent them in the state assembly, I would be outraged that this corporation, just as they're about to start paying their full property tax bill, as agreed to a decade ago, they conveniently decide to pick up their ball and go elsewhere. Montgomery, beware, there's a lesson to learn here. It is my understanding that Medline originally went to the Orange County IDA for their new application, only to eventually shop around for a better deal, which landed them here in Montgomery. Is this so-called race to the bottom, who can give me the biggest tax break approach, any indication as to what kind of neighbors this corporate warehouse will be? I will let you all be the judge for that. Let's talk now about whether Medline really needs this incentive to be financially competitive. I recently went through their application to the Montgomery IDA, and there's a chart that breaks down Medline's estimated profits with IDA benefits and without IDA benefits. Year one with IDA benefits, $76,808,000, this is profit. Year one without IDA benefits, $74,804,000. Let me repeat, without a dime of IDA benefits, Medline will net $74,804,000 in just the first year. Any IDA benefits, especially after having already received a decade's worth of incentives, has nothing to do with financial viability and everything to do with pure disgusting corporate greed that's built on the backs of tax payers. I do not envy this planning board's responsibilities. Your job, or largely thank, as no doubt you've come to learn, but nevertheless, important public service. As you and local elected officials consider the merits of the Medline project itself, I respectfully urge this, before considering another iota of the project's merits, make it clear to these folks that they need to get their hands out of the pockets of Montgomery's residents, our message to them should be loud and simple, pay your damn taxes. Anything to sort of that, if you're responsible, offensive, and a disgusting display of greed. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Tim Muller.
My name is Tim Muller. I've been a resident of the town of Montgomery for over 30 years. Good evening, my name is Tim Muller. I've been a resident of the town of Montgomery for over 30 years. I'm also a business representative with the operating engineers Local 825. Local 825 represents over 7,000 members throughout its jurisdiction, which includes Montgomery here in Orange County. Our members operate the heavy equipment machinery seen on construction sites. They perform land surveying and layout. They also work in equipment rental and repair facilities, as well as in concrete and asphalt plants and quarries. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Medline Industries Distribution Center project. Medline has proposed to build a state-in-the-art distribution center, which would not only retain their present employees, but would eventually add over 300 new positions to their staff. With regard to the construction facility, the site work alone could provide my members with thousands of hours of work, which is needed for them to provide for their families. Many of our members live in the area also. While many say construction jobs are only temporary jobs, it's jobs like these that support our members' families. With all due respect, while everyone is very passionate about their position on this issue, I feel the need for local job retention and job creation is crucial, and I thank you for your time and consideration of the project.
Okay, Joseph Eller.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joseph Eller. I am a resident of Walter, New York. I'm an actor. I'm a real worker in this community.
I'm Joseph Eller.
I'm a real person, and I'm a worker in this community, I'm a resident, and I've worked for Medline now for three years. Before I worked for Medline, I worked for a company for ten years, and at that point it was really tough for me to leave. I talked to my wife, and we made a family decision, and three years later I'm still working at Medline because of what we say every day. Uh, our three pillars are taking care of the customers, taking care of Medline, but most of all, we take care of our team members. And our team members are members of this community as well. And we all go to work every day, and we make sure we provide services and products for anybody that goes to hospitals, hospice, I'm sorry. And make sure that we're all taken care of on a day-to-day basis, and we take that very seriously every day. And I'm part of this community, and I'm telling you from what I've learned in my experience at Medline, is that what we say is what we do. And every day when I go to work, I don't have to worry if I'm gonna work too late and miss a family event, or even be a part of the community. I'm able to be there. I was a graduate of Washington High School. Some of you might know me in this room. I graduated in two thousand and five. So I'm a local resident, and I more or less wanna be here to represent my company, my community, my family most of all, and say more or less that Medline is a company, we say what we do, we take care of everybody as well. And I appreciate everybody's time, I appreciate everybody's hard work, and I really, really hope you all consider when you're sitting in this room where I'm living in Walter, New York, I'm a resident too, and I appreciate everything everybody does in this room, and I thank you for your time.
Jackie Walker?
Hello, hi. Hi, my name's Jackie Walker. Uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, I've been living here in Montgomery for twenty-three years. Uh, I graduated from that elementary school. I actually eat in this cafeteria. I live here on Seventeen K. Bought my house here five years ago, to feed my family. I have three boys. I just wanted to say that Medline made that possible for me, and, uh, I'm just here to support my job, obviously. Uh, I think we have the most important customers, and, um, yeah, that's, that's very good. Okay, thank you.
Maria Garcia?
Good evening. My name is Maria Garcia. I worked for Medline for the past... Sorry. Good evening. My name is Maria Garcia. I worked for Medline for the past thirteen years. I'm a example of how the company tried to take care of employees as well as the community. I was working at Medline when we were located on the other side of the city, uh, the middle town. When we moved to the pressing building, Weyouayanda, I was able to keep my job. Uh, it was able to keep my job. It is awesome to have the opportunity to continue my career at Medline and move to Montgomery, uh, where I will be able to continue to impact people's lives. This is very important to me personally. As I am a example of the lives of Medline in fact, I can survive. If that's gonna be for Medline problems, I don't wanna be here tonight, I tell you. This company offered me a career. For Medline, it's important that because of my having asthma, all the asthma, a vision needed on time. So I'm here, I worked for Medline when we were only a employee, and now they're all in Middletown, three hundred and over, and I expect to keep my job here in Montgomery. Thank you very much.
My name is Chris Drone. I'm a representative for Labor's Local Seventeen, here in Bergen, reading this on behalf of my boss, Todd DuOrio. Good evening. Sorry I could not be here tonight as I'm away at a mandatory leadership conference, but I feel it is important to convey our support for the Medline project. This is a major project for the local construction industry. Medline is committed to the use of local union labor, and both Medline and its contractors continue to have open dialogue with Hudson Valley Building and Construction Trades Council. Medline is early on in the construction process, and to date is only concentrated on the site work and concrete packages. The site work and concrete contracts will be awarded to union contractors ensuring that local union trades workers will be used and will earn good wages and benefits. We are working closely with Dimitri Dukan and Medline and Robert Curry of Austin Construction, New York, to ensure that all construction contracts are awarded to contractors who hire local, I commend, I'm sorry, who hire local, which is a requirement of the Town of Montgomery Local Labor Policy. I commend the Town of Montgomery for adopting a policy committed to protecting local labor and suppliers. The site work alone on this project is estimated to be over thirty million dollars and will employ many of the labors and operating engineers present here tonight. Further, this project will create over three hundred and fifty construction jobs. Medline will be making a capital investment of a hundred and twenty-nine million for this project, and in year one will generate eight hundred thousand dollars in annual taxes in three倍a year by year fifteen, including a two-point-three million dollars which will go directly to the Valley Central School District. Like many recent projects throughout the Hudson Valley, Medline faces opposition. I commend Medline for holding up informational sessions and addressing the concerns of local residents. To date, I feel that Medline has been a good neighbor and will address all issues within reason. In closing, Labor's Local Seventeen supports this project. The Hudson Valley Building and Construction Trades Council, which represents over ten thousand trades workers and twenty-eight local unions, looks forward to working with the Town of Montgomery and Medline to move this project forward, ensuring the use of local, preferably, union labor.
Alan Melanson?
My name is Alan Melanson. I'm part of the Medline team. Uh, I grew up here in the village of Montgomery. I moved here in nineteen ninety-three. Uh, I went to this middle school, I graduated this high school. Uh, I recognize a lot of people in this room. I used to work at Chakra, it was my first job, worked there for five or six years. I was saying, my first job was also here in Montgomery. I worked at Chakra for five or six years. I recognize a lot of people in this room. I packed your groceries, I put your, your milk on the shelf, or I pushed your cart, or grabbed the cart from the snow to bring back in the building. For me, Medline staying in this, in this town, it's a, it's a big deal, it's pride for me. I have a three-year-old daughter now. She was born in Orange Regional Hospital, sitting in the hospital room, Medline products everywhere, that was pride for me. I'm very excited about Medline wanting to stay in Montgomery. I'm very happy that Medline wants to protect my job and keep me here. Uh, that's it, I just kinda woke it up to say my piece. Thank you guys for waking it up, I appreciate it.
Sorry about this, it's, I believe Raymond starts with a C? I apologize, I, I can't, I can't read it. Raymond, Raymond Cor?
Cor.
Cor, yes. Car? Raymond Carr? Oh, once, twice? Okay, fine. Uh, Thomas Walcott?
My name's Thomas Walcott, from the village of Neber. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Patricia. Uh, we have no vested interest in Medline project, but we are supporters of the RBN. Board members, you have to ask yourself, what has caused such an outpouring of attendance, passion, and emotion tonight? The simple answer is fear. The taxpayers of the Town of Montgomery believe that something dangerous, painful, or perhaps life-threatening will change their current quality of life. Does the DEIS, prepared and paid for by the applicant, remove or mitigate these concerns? The answer is categorically no. In fact, it poses more questions than it answers in our opinion. Every topic addressed and reviewed, for example, traffic, emergency services, air quality, noise, vital impact, water sewer extensions, et cetera, appears to be very subjective in the applicant's financial best interest. Many, if not all, categories are concluded with minimal mitigation or none required. Subjective conclusions that in our opinion will be financially shouldered or endured by the Town of Montgomery taxpayer both now and in the future. As noted in the DEIS, all conclusions are the applicant's and are subject to further review and scrutiny by the planning board. Has the planning board completed due diligence? And if so, why was it completed in conjunction with a nineteen eighty-eight Montgomery master plan? Entire process and project demands a moratorium now, not after the fact. Medline has actively advertised that it is trying to be the best corporate citizen from day one. We contend that it's no more than a corporate wolf in a citizen's cheap clothing. At its Waukegan, Illinois facility in two thousand and nineteen, it released three thousand fifty-eight pounds of ethylene oxide, noted as ETO. In two thousand and seventeen, it released two thousand eight hundred sixty thousand pounds of the chemical into the air. The clear gas was a well-known neurological, uh, excuse me, the clear blood gas was already known to cause tumors in the brain, lung, breast, uterus, lymph symptoms, as well as neurological and respiratory effects. Lake County, Illinois children have been breathing toxic carcinogenic air daily as there are multiple daycare centers and schools within striking distance. A two thousand and eighteen EPA report noted that the small city of Waukegan, Illinois, biggest source of pollution was its Medline facility. Does this reflect the best corporate citizen motto the Town of Montgomery taxpayers are being sold from the press? Not worthy of interest is a March two thousand legal action regarding this settlement.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Karen Hamilton, and I'm an almost thirty-year resident of the Town of Montgomery, and I'm also a proud, uh, team member of the Medline facility out in Middletown. I'm just here to let you know that from my experience, I can confidently say that Medline takes care of its people, it takes care of its customers, and it's a great company to work for. It'll be a great source of jobs for future residents here, and I wanted to express my support for the facility here in Montgomery. I'm well aware that it seems like it's just ten years since they opened their facility in Middletown, but they've outgrown it. They've done such a great job with our customers that we are winning business left and right, and the facility is at capacity. And it means a lot to me that this company that I've only worked for for a year wants to keep its employees in Montgomery, that they're not gonna leave this area and I'll be able to work again. I trust in my company and, um, hope that we have a great new facility here in the near future. Thanks so much for your time.
Oh, I got one of those things. Is that Rod Mitchell's? He's already starting with the timing, okay. Um, I made that. Medline sent out those postcards and artistically foresharpened them such that it looked like a tiny little building, so I used the right angle and I extrapolated across, and I got in the, I think it was, how many was the first? Hundred and forty-four tractor trailer bays in the front. In the back, there's another hundred and twenty-one tractor trailer bays. There's a total of sixty, six hundred parking spaces for cars. I couldn't fit in the retaining walls because I couldn't get a piece of poster board long enough. I couldn't fit in all the water pits that'll collect the water that's runoff from it, but that should be in there too. My point of that is, um, you know, if you sent out those postcards, the fact about Medline, well, that should've come as like a zip code, because that's what you have. I put the plans right underneath it, so if anybody wants to verify those drawings, they're right there. Um, this is an industrial park area, which allows for three tractor trailer bays per to warehouse, and you've got two hundred and eighty-five tractor trailer bays. This is a historic community, uh, you had Neely Town Road for warehouses, and, um, when Minister didn't get their school taxes, sixty-five people lost their jobs for this coming around. So I know you guys don't wanna lose your jobs, but you know, you got teachers that got a teaching degree and probably still paying off the loans, and they lost their jobs too. I feel like we're being used. Uh, if you make a pyramid here of who's gonna make the money, it's not you or I, it's Medline, RJ Smith, John Capella, Larry Wodenski, Orange County Partnership, Maureen Hallinan, that's, that's the money pyramid right there. You guys might keep or lose your jobs, you're not gonna make what they're making. This is at the expense of taxpayers and residents in the Town of Montgomery in Montgomery. Additionally, Rich Hunt and Marano on the planning board was absolutely correct when he said that the DEIS should not be accepted, because the Town of Montgomery does not have a wastewater treatment plant. And when they tell you that they're gonna enlarge the one we have, I don't think Medline realizes what you have in Montgomery, or then again, maybe you do, and that's why you came here. Montgomery doesn't have more than one building inspector, there's no MS four inspector, there's no fire inspector. When I was town supervisor in two thousand and four, there were two building inspectors full-time and one part-time. There's one guy now. Okay, one guy, and you have all these mega warehouses. Sailfish, Amazon is coming in, they were ordered before the county IDA, asking for a reduction in local labor. They wanted to go from eighty-five to sixty or lower, and if they don't get that, you know what? We'll just bring everybody up from Tennessee. We're being used, and you're being used too, Bob. And Mr. DuOrio, Mr. DuOrio should know that when I was town supervisor, I had three reports done, one for four sixteen and two eleven. It would've facilitated avionics engineering technology projects. That's buildings, that's jobs on multi-levels, that's a future. It would've allowed for flying residential zoning. The farmer would've made two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars an acre, and he wouldn't have had to sell a whole farm to see a profit. We're being used. Being, being planning for the report for Seventeen K from Montgomery Village to... Being planning with a report for 17K from Montgomery Village to Newburgh and from Walden to Mabry, to get all of that zoned and up to date. That did not happen. For 416, don't do that. That's just so crazy. Okay, it's fair, but it's not fair, because these people, these taxpayers, paid for those reports, and none of it was implemented. There is also a town-wide economic development plan that was put in place so that everybody could have jobs and jobs with futures and buildings and structures that would last and wouldn't cut loose when their tax breaks were up. That was put on the shelf, and it still remains in draft form. So Mr. Biorio, you should get the town board to drag those three reports out and get real construction, real building in place that people can be proud of, not something like this that is going to destroy the quality of life for everybody in Montgomery. That says I'm done. That's giving... Oh, I forgot to trap my kiddo. I've got a daughter that we're... Her dad and I are going to have to put through college. We're all on the same level here. Fair enough.
Chris Camillo.
Hi, hello folks. My name is Chris Camillo. Hello, everybody. Thanks for coming. We have a serious debacle here, and I'd like to say a couple of words. Pilot program is a marvelous idea. I'd like to file for a retroactive one myself. I bought with all the money I had a restaurant in this town 22 years ago. I put your kids to work, I fed your kids, and I've probably fed the family as well on my dime when they came in to see their kid. I thank Montgomery for that, but I really struggle to pay the taxes to this day. First of all, the 10-year pilot, we learned, didn't really work with Osgrean, which is still empty and part of the police department in the Town of Montgomery Town Hall, still vacant and income-free and a burden on our tax money. The Medline wants to be good neighbors, and they're taking care of their employees. I commend them for that, as they should be taken care of, but they want to be good neighbors, kind of like the way they were a good neighbor in Waymeanda when they walk out on the 10th year. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, the same article that was in the Council Record and was mentioned already by Mr. Scoobis or Mr. Berger, that they walked out on a $476,000 school tax or grant tax bill for the year and paid $17,000 of it. That's really kind of nasty. I paid my taxes with interest every time and struggled. And $76 million without the... With the... $74 million without the pilot is pretty nice money. I mean, I don't imagine they could, after 10 years, fork over the rest of that, almost half a million dollars, that would really be beneficial to town. What do they end up, sure, give those people their jobs at school back? But the biggest problem I have is, we've got a town board, planning board, that's kind of elected by us, and I feel really bad that we're fighting with you guys and you're fighting with us. What's up with that? Aren't you supposed to work together with the community especially? And with your businesses, and Medline, and Pride, you're bringing in an awful team to either with no planned board, planned plan, with no master plan, no scrutiny, you're not counteracting, counter-offering anything. They come in, write themselves a note. Low water tables, pylons, God, what... We got a week of rain, what's going to happen? The runoff from one square foot of land with an inch of rain is massive gallons of water. Where's it going? Walcott's going to flood all whole county. It's wrong. Nobody feels right in the town right now unless it's worked for Medline, and that's good. You should feel good you've got a job. But it's not fair for the community, and you're not good neighbors. If you're good neighbors, you fork over the extra money, but it's taxes. For you, it's a small tack off your profit. For us, it's often a bloody loan. So do due diligence, do your job, pay us, because we're giving you an awful lot. Thanks very much for your time.
Kristen Brown.
I'm sorry, Kristen Brown. Hi, sorry. I didn't hear. I didn't hear.
How was you? One and old.
Okay. Can I be heard in that?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you for... First off, thank you for everybody showing up. I thank the planning board and all of its associates, because we all need to be heard equally. I'm a fifth-generation farmer on our family farm here in Montgomery, and I just have a couple of concerns. First off, simple, size and scale of facility that's proposed, but the impacts to our quality of life. We're normal people, we're residents. We want a good, high quality of life, and we want to be heard. This sets a dangerous precedent in our town, just like last night at Selfish. Secondly, the location of Waymeanda. I go past it weekly. My folks' farm is in Waymeanda. My mom was a bus driver who retired early because of her concern with Minister's school budget. It's secluded, there's no residents nearby. The location is a significant, much better position than what we're looking at with the close proximity to the village. If you drive by it, you don't see it. You see a good sign, it's a Medline, you see a beautiful driveway, you see shrubbery, it sits back on a hill. That's something that we need to take in consideration with the location that is proposed here right next to the village. So my biggest concern, one of my bigger concerns, is that they are leaving the facility, as everybody else has said, it's been 10 years. So in the Village of Montgomery meeting, they said that this facility that they're building, they will not leave. And I believe that was part of the presentation that they had set. So why are you leaving Waymeanda now and not keeping Waymeanda as a satellite facility? If you think that you're... No, you say that you're outgrowing it. Well, what's going to happen in 10 years? Your business projection is going to continue to grow. Are you going to outgrow this facility in 10 years? And then what? Then we're stuck with it? It's going to come next. And my last comment is just feedback as the planning board, as a reminder, you guys work for us. There's an election in the back.
Maureen Hallinan.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us this public forum where everyone has the opportunity to speak. My name is Maureen Hallinan. I am the president and CEO of the Orange County Partnership. As our school tax costs rise and school budgets are negotiated year over year, we constantly have to make hard decisions that often result in cutting jobs and programs for our schools. As our special services and government costs continue to rise, we have to think long and hard on where all the money is going to come from to pay for all of this. The Orange County Partnership conducted a study a few years back that illustrates the importance of commercial development in the Town of Montgomery. We did a search on how many properties in the Town of Montgomery were zoned residential. There were approximately 7,000 parcels of land zoned residential. That doesn't mean there were 7,000 homes per se, but specifically sites that were zoned that way. Of those 7,000 residential parcels, those property owners pay approximately 65% a year in total taxes. On the flip side, there are just over 1,000 commercial properties in your town. 35% of your tax dollars generated in the Town of Montgomery are paid by only 12% of your property owners, the properties zoned commercial. Commercial development is a critical component of our overall health and economic well-being. We have to support commercial development to offset our overall costs, especially for our schools. We're asking that you approve the Medline project, which will soon be one of the highest taxpayers in your town and one of your largest employers. Thank you so much.
RJ Smith.
Good evening. I would like to talk a little generically about a little history with Montgomery. My family moved here in 1720. Some of my family members are buried in the church and have Revolutionary War emblem veterans on them. And... Okay. The Town of Montgomery has done a mild job of preserving open space. It is, next to Warwick, it is the leader in the county of using the farmland preservation programs, the purchase of development rights, conservation easements, in preserving over 12 farms. That's why you can drive up and down River Road, Walk Hill Avenue, Old Post Road, Hill Avenue, you can see farms that are preserved in perpetuity because of the efforts. This board followed suit by using land use planning techniques to preserve open space, clustering developments, home to residential developments, and preserving with conservation easement open space. There literally have been thousands of acres that have been preserved. In the 1960s, the state built Route 84 through the town. In the 1970s, the town leaders identified the need to have this balance between open space, farmland, and residential use with economic development. It identified in comprehensive plans, it identified in their zoning, the Route 84 corridor as the area to facilitate a small percentage of the town to facilitate economic development. It worked with the county to build County Route 99, Neely Town Road, specifically to facilitate economic development. Frankly, the success, I think, is beyond what anyone believed it would be. Incidentally, this farm, 8 Brook, conveyed land for Route 84. This farm, 8 Brook, conveyed land for Neely Town Road. And this farm, 8 Brook, conveyed land for the town's sewer treatment plant. It also conveyed land for Home Depot and conveyed land for UPS. So this corridor is identified, going back to the 60s, in the comprehensive plans, multiple comprehensive plans, and multiple zoning, zoning changes, as the corridor for economic development. And it says specifically, the 84 corridor from airport to airport, Orange County Airport to Stewart Airport, going back before it was even a public, even a public airport. So this is the place where you want to facilitate. The Town of Montgomery is a role model in preserving open space, using land use techniques to do it properly, and facilitating economic development. This is appropriate and well-planned. Thank you.
Mark Rizzo.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? My name's Mark Rizzo. I'm 33 years old. I graduated from Fort Rivers High School. I don't even live in New York. I commute to work all the way from Milford, Pennsylvania. I continue to want to commute from Milford, Pennsylvania to provide for my family. I have three kids. I've been married for 10 years. The medical field's always been really important to me. I've had... All three of my kids are micropremies. My wife is a cervical cancer survivor. And Medline has done nothing but everything to support me. I hope we get this new building so I can service all the customers I gave back to my family. Thank you.
Chris Hughes.
How you doing? Can everybody hear me? Sorry. My name's Chris Hughes. I grew up in Campbell Hall. I graduated from Goshen in 2003. I've worked for Medline for about seven years. Started there in 2012. When I started, there was 40 people who worked at the warehouse. We were racked out in the building about halfway. So in the time I've been there, we have built a building completely out, and we, like was said earlier by one of my colleagues, we're fully at capacity. We have nowhere to put things. When they come in the door, we have to make moves almost on a regular basis, which is creating more overtime for our team members on a regular basis. We're getting creative every day with what we have to do. This is causing more overtime every day for our team members. The work-life balance on a regular basis is getting harder for our team. Getting a larger building for us is a necessity at this point. It's not something that we can live with anymore. Being inside the building that we currently have is... We can't function really with what we have. We need bigger space. It's just the reality of the situation. Medline wants to stay where we are because it's a family to them. It's privately held. They are... They don't just preach that. I've learned that. I started as a selectman. I worked my way up to a supervisor. A couple of my colleagues have the same way. They started from the ground, worked their way up. They try to promote from within. It's the culture they create. We instill that with our team members. We're trying to keep that here because it's a family to them. So with that, we don't want to leave the area. We want to stay there. We want to keep the core of the people that we have. It's... But if they can't stay, they're going to leave. My wife and child are sitting here with that. It's... I don't want to pick them up and leave if we have to, but... And I don't want to have to go look for another job. I need to help provide for my child. So I would prefer to stay with what I have, to be honest with you. The company itself, too, since I started, every year with the holidays, they work with local community centers. They work with churches and temples and things of that nature. They find families in need. Team members donate. We give back to our communities. So it's not just the company itself, it's the team members. We instill that culture. So it's more than just... I know people are here talking about the corporate greed, but it's not that. It's they instill a culture of caring about each other. So, thank you.
Kathy Peitz.
I keep hearing the word balance, and that being tips the scales. And we've got another one on the other end of Montgomery. So this is not a referendum on Medline at all, like it wasn't last year in Antwerp. If only Medline could find an appropriate site. Tonight is about the DEIS, so I'm going to talk about stormwater, traffic, noise, and wastewater. Stormwater. The Walk Hill River is 50... This is difficult.
Turn it off!
I'll get closer. How's that? Stormwater. The Walk Hill River is 50 feet from the site. 85% of the site will be disturbed during construction. That's 88.4 acres. It is stated that the five-acre limit of disturbance per phase of construction is, quote, "not practical for their purposes," end quote. They will be requesting a waiver to disturb more than five acres at a time. Sound like Legoland? What a disaster! Who will monitor soil erosion and sediment control? I suggest that meaningful fines be imposed for violations, monetary amounts that will hurt not just something that they would see as a cost of doing business, as well as time delays if they don't comply. The final stormwater control plan for the 57 and a half acres of impervious surface, as proposed, requires elaborate engineering to construct and a serious maintenance regimen, including two CBS units to filter the runoff of the site. Who will monitor this? More importantly, who will be responsible for this system once they leave the site? The Town of Montgomery? It will continue to rain. Their stormwater plan also includes floodplain storage, floodplain storage, to offset the encroachment into the 100-year floodplain. The plan will be, quote, "designed to allow runoff to infiltrate into the ground," unquote. Will the soil types there allow this after the cut-and-fill process is complete? On page 9...